We'll be phoning it in tonight due to the weather. It does take me a bit of a trek to get here.
We get half off the billables that way, right?
That's right, half off, right, John? Say nothing.
I'll see how long the meeting goes.
Okay, so I'll call to order the Wednesday, February 20th, Meeting of Norbert Borough Council. It is 7:35 PM. Mr. Metcalf, could you call the roll?
Mr. Weissboard, I'm here. Ms. Rickards.
Here.
Ms. Pananopoulos.
Present.
Nixon.
Here.
Mr. McGreevy.
Here.
Vice President Teblin-Moffett.
Present.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
President Mutrick.
Here. Mayor Deutsch, could you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My only comments this evening are that we've been bouncing around, Council has, with a number of different sort of administrative, but also policy-driven projects, one of which has been talking about goals for our staff, the other has been talking about the rules of how we work together, and then a third, which as Council McGreevy pointed out, has been sort of on a very low burner for a while, but needs to move up, is sort of our priorities of what projects we really want the office working on. I think we've discussed sort of what their bandwidth is, and I'm hoping that tonight we can add that to the agenda under information. So if someone's interested, I'll take a motion to add, I will call it AE.
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Priorities and projects. All right, Ms. Mayor, do you have a report?
I do. I have the monthly Norbert Police Department Report as submitted by Chief Gallagher. There are a couple of highlights on the report that I just want folks to know about. The Norbert Police have made over 70 calls in January, and they've been checking, regularly checking, the schools, the daycares, the pre-k's to make sure everybody's okay, along with the banks, and the pharmacy, and some regular stops, so they are regularly, routinely checking potential spots in the borough to make sure that they are not easily seen as soft targets. So I want to thank them for that. There has been a noticeable increase in car stops for going through stop signs and going too fast. I think we're up close to 50% in car stops, and that will continue. We're trying to change people's behavior, make them slow down, and stop, and follow the rules of the road. I'd like to also recognize our parking controller, Robin. She has made over 600 parking tickets in January. It's a lot of tickets. So remember to feed those meters and move your car within those two hours timelines. Also, if you're on a snow route, please remember to move your car within an hour of the start of snow. And speaking of snow, it is the ordinance in the borough that you need to clear your sidewalks within 24 hours of the end of snow, and that's for everybody's benefit, so everybody can walk around and be safe, particularly on busy streets, Montgomery Avenue. Please make sure you have your sidewalks cleared. There will be stepped-up enforcement of this ordinance to make sure everybody keeps it safe in the borough. If you do see someone who has not cleared their sidewalk, Chief Gallagher wants you to dial 911. And that's okay. It's okay to dial 911 to report it, and that alerts our police officers, who can go and then address it. And so I would encourage folks to use our 911 system as it's intended to be used. And that is it. See ya.
Go ahead, Council Rickards has a question.
Ms. Mayor, a question. What is the, for either you or Chief Gallagher, what is the uptick to 15 under suspicious persons audits? Is that classified as a car stop?
No.
What's the reason for that giant jump, Chief?
Thanks for the question. Actually, I think that's part of our agenda, where we're encouraging more people to dial 911 when they, to report suspicious activity. For instance, one of the biggest problems that we've had since my hire was that we have people calling the Norbert Police Station, and they're reporting activity to us in Norbert. Well, frequently, sometimes in the station, we're not there, so we're trying to redirect everybody to make these calls through the county system in Montgomery County, so they're now logged. People reporting suspicious activity to us is exactly what we want. Sometimes we'll find these messages that are actually on our phones, but now they're getting, they're going through the 911 system, so that's actually a good benchmark for us. I know to the public and to council, it may seem like we have all this suspicious activity. It's really no different than before. We're just actually tabulating it the right way.
Perfect. I have one, you don't have. Yeah, you got it.
Yep, that goes along with the increased use of 911. Perfect. I have to submit a new report.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I'll now hand off to Solicitor Walco to begin a public hearing.
Okay, can I, am I being heard correctly?
You are.
All right. We are going to open the public hearing today for Ordinance 1014. I have six exhibits to move in for this ordinance. Order Exhibit 1 is the ordinance itself. Order Exhibit 2 is the legal notice for tonight's hearing. Order Exhibit 3 is the proof of publication in the Main Line Times for tonight's hearing, which is published on February 3rd. February 10th, 2019. Order Exhibit 4 is the proof of submission to the Montgomery County Law Library, which was submitted on January 24th, 2019. Order Exhibit 5 is proof of submission to the Norbert Planning Commission on January 17th, 2019. Order Exhibit 6 is the proof of submission to the Montgomery County Planning Commission on January 17th, 2019. This ordinance essentially addresses two areas of the Form-based Code. The first is the section that deals with the Windsor Avenue development for apartments and multi-use buildings. My understanding is that after the 114 project was discussed, there was a need, or at least a desire, to provide additional sort of regulations to encourage really what the Planning Commission would like to see on that. So this provides a little bit more restrictions on width frontages, surface parking, garage entrances, and if a fourth story is being permitted, it has to be sort of stepped back the height it goes. There was also a concern of, I guess, a larger building sort of creeping into the 4A residential district. There's language in here that would limit such building, three stories, and again, there are the width requirements. The second section, oh, it also encourages first-floor uses in apartment buildings. That was something that came out from the conditional hearing, use hearing, to try to provide additional language to encourage any future developments to allow retail or light industry or office uses on the first floor, but also have apartment buildings on the upper floors. The second section addresses the Montgomery Avenue corridor, which is the 5B district, for properties that are corner properties, so any streets that run from particular to Montgomery Avenue. This creates an ability through a special exception process, a non-conditional use of special exception process, to sort of amend the established site plan standards to allow essentially more of the frontage to be along the side street and not along Montgomery Avenue. There are conditions that were set up that would have to be followed for that special exception process, including street replacement issues and a lot of buffering for three-year properties, because it does offer residential properties there. So these are just sort of changes that allow for additional developments on the Montgomery Avenue corridor. Both coming from the Planning Commission's, or the language, this is something that was approved by both of the Council members.
Okay.
And with that, is there's any questions from, I guess, council at this time?
Counselors, any questions? We've reviewed this. Okay, no questions from council members?
Okay, are there any questions from the audience?
Any questions from members of the public? This will be your opportunity for any questions on Ordinance 1014. Hearing none?
Okay, with that, we will close this public hearing, and this ordinance will now be in a position for council to vote upon.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to Agenda Item 6, Public Comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to comment on any issue, any issue that they please. You could read us poetry if you like, but I will impose a time limit.
We'll encourage that.
Any public comment? Hearing none. We will move on to Action Item 7A. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, President Mutrick, I move that Borough Council approve the minutes of the January 2, 2019 workshop meeting and January 16, 2019 business meeting of Norbert Borough Council.
Second, Matt. Any discussion on the minutes? All approved? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Schedule of bills. Back to you, Councilor Nixon.
Certainly. President Mutrick, I move that Borough Council approve the schedule of bills of the general sewer and solid waste funds and authorize Borough Manager to pay all bills forthwith.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion. 7C, Ordinance 1014. Can we get someone to put this on the table?
Sure thing. President Mutrick, sorry, I had to get all the bills out of the way. I move that Borough Council adopt Ordinance 1014 and ordinance amending the Norbert Borough Zoning Code, Chapter 124, Section 124.301(c)(4), to amend the setback frontage building with height and first-floor use requirements, amending 124.401(b) to provide corner lot standards in the 5B district, and perform the modification of certain standards by special exception.
Second. All right. Any discussion?
So I just would like to say something. So I've heard from the public in the borough, a lot, and outside the borough, quite frankly, in the last couple of days, and there's a lot of disinformation and a lot of people having just confusion about what properties have been sold, what's before us and what isn't. Now, of course, we do our best, as does the civic, to provide as much information back out to the public as we can. We've heard everything from seven stories at the Albrecht site, I just heard that yesterday. I heard that the Ricklands building was going to be resold, and it was going to be turned into something horrendous. And I think that as much as we are communicating and trying to get the information back out to the public about what is happening, some of the onus is on the public to come to this room, or call the office, or speak to a council member. You know where to find us. Email is always great, or you can pick up the phone, but don't allow your neighbors to lead you down a path of disinformation. Come here and find the facts. We'll be happy to explain to you what's going on. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor of adopting Ordinance 1014 as the ordinance amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Back to you, Jim.
Certainly. Sorry, you're getting a lot of Jim, everybody. I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2019-2 Minor Lot Subdivision Preliminary Final Plan, 838, 840, Montgomery Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we reviewed this at the last meeting. This is a paper line on--
The twin be a twin.
Former Sun Valley Pizza. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 7E, Jim?
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2019-3 Tentative Sketch Plan Development Plan to 104th Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. 7F?
Sure. This goes underneath. Oh, and I can move, it's fancy, I can talk. 7F, I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2019-4 Tentative Sketch Plan Development, 2003, Haverford Avenue.
203, Haverford.
203, yeah, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Cindy, by a nose.
No, I just, I thought maybe for members of the public, it might be helpful to just let people know what it is that we're approving.
That's right.
Yeah, just because, following up on what you said. Tentative sketch land development. We do not have building plans. We do not have sketches of those. We don't have details. This is, this was presented at our workshop meeting two weeks ago, and the civic captured it, if you wanted to see what they were. It's really just, if anybody has a copy to hold up, it's really just sort of shows where, the foot, shows the footprint of the building, basically, and the location of parking, and some features like that.
What they want to do.
It's not an enormous amount of detail, so there will be subsequent presentations and other, and council will be revisiting these developments in the future and more detailed plans, just so you know.
Okay. Break.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2019-5 Grant Application in Montgomery County to 2040 Implementation Grant Program. This is the bike infrastructure grant.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Thank you to the office. Thanks, everybody.
That was a quick turnaround.
Together on this.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Any opposed? None. 7H?
Sure. President Mutrick, I move that Borough Council amend the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, in the amount of $6,791 for the purchase of police ballistic vests.
Second.
If I may, since we just covered this about 45 minutes ago with Finance Administration, there's essentially two components to a police vest. One would be the outer fabric, the other would be the paneling inside that actually stops the bullets. The paneling that stops the bullets has a lifespan of five years. That paneling has expired, therefore, we need new paneling. For about $1,000 more, we can also provide new outerwear that covers the paneling. We've been told and shown the outerwear that the force is currently using is essentially close to the end of its lifespan. The recommendation from Public Safety was unanimously that we go with wholesale replacement for the extra $1,000, and that was Finance Administration's recommendation as well.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
I thought I made--
Ms. Mayor?
This is an essential piece of equipment that our police cannot go without, and I appreciate council's thoughtfulness on this, on this motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Last one, Jim?
All right. President Mutrick, I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2019-6, Resolution Authorizing Cooperative Purchasing and Participation in the Regional Street Light Procurement Program, administered by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Second, Matt.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Sure. I think for the benefit of the public, and for those who have asked, what is the dollar amount the borough would have to put out first, upfront, in order to go forward with this project?
$8,300.
$8,300?
For an inventory of what we have, and what replacement recommendations. We should recover that, we were told tonight, this year.
Yep.
This pays for itself.
So for those of you who asked, ask and answer.
I have a question. Have we run this by our EAC?
No, we have not.
In the future, then, when we have these things come up, it might be now that we have our new EAC, it would be nice to kind of let them bet that as well.
I think that's part of the discussion I think we're going to have, because like, a lot of us don't know how we're supposed to direct them, and who goes where.
There's a lot on the--
Some notes on that will get a little further in--
That maybe should be expanded.
Sure. Okay. Yeah.
I think that, you know what happened? The staff started to investigate the Delaware, I always gosh this, but the program, because there was an open window where we could enter the program for free, without an expense. We opted into that prior to the creation of the EAC.
That's fine. Now that we have the EAC, it should be on our radar, all of our radar. That's all.
The most exciting thing to me about the proposal was the fact that we would save $750,000 in 10 years.
Yeah, I think that's--
After one gets--
No radar. It's a good thing.
Yeah. I could have said, you know, I just want to say--
It seems like this is not a difficult point.
No.
Just that, I think we should, we should recognize the hard work of Mr. West, as well as Shawn.
Thank you.
Matt did a lot of work on this.
I agree with the making.
You know, Matt West's work on this, he's our Assistant Borough Manager, this is not only going to save us a ton of money, as Bob just pointed out, but it's also, it's going to save a lot of kilowatt-hours. This is green in the pocket, and green energy.
And the lighting will be better than the existing lighting.
Yeah.
It's kind of a win-win-win.
Less light illusion. It's going to save money. It's a great program.
Yeah.
So it's good, good performance by staff. They deserve the credit, obviously. You have to actually go to it, though.
All right, yes. All right. Was that new?
Aye.
All right, okay. Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's go to Mr. Manager. What is your report?
Thank you. I might need a second here to collect my pages. I'm going to condense the report that I gave with Finance and Administration a little bit, and the long version of it is in the meeting package for everyone. I do want to make some point, we'll be talking about money every time I do a Borough Manager's Report. Lots of numbers, where we're at, and that kind of conversation.
Thank you.
The Borough's General Fund's at its low watermark for the year. Generally, that happens around February. That's when our normally recurring expenses, like payroll and insurance costs, they keep coming in, but our revenue comes in in two really distinct big ways. One happens around the third week in March, where property owners pay their property tax in the discount period, so take advantage of that. That gets you a 2% discount on your tax rate. And we'll collect usually about 90% of our tax revenue by April 1, and then the rest will come in prior to the end of the face value period, which I believe is June 1. I might not have that date right. So we have to manage cash, and we have to pay very close attention to cash because of the present state that the Borough's General Fund is in. We came very close. You can look in our Cash Fund Balance Report in the meeting package. Our General Fund checking account had $48,000 in it as of the end of January 31. Our monthly health insurance bill is north of $39,000. So that's why we keep an eye on that. That's why I was checking it every day, and it's really because we've improved our bookkeeping systems, and we've been keeping a closer eye on things, that we're able to run a really thin cash margin and not have to, not have to worry about bouncing checks. So that's a good thing. Through this point of the year, the Borough's Profit and Loss Statement reports a loss of about $201,000. We've spent $200,000 more than we've taken in through this far this year, and that's just typical because of the way, the way we, the way we run the operation. In spite of these challenges, and in spite of the information I've been giving every month, 2019 marks the first year in many recent years, and I don't know how far back this is, goes, that no inter-fund transfers or tax anticipation notes are going to be needed for the Borough's General Fund to avoid being overdrawn. So we are, our head is above water. We are, the seas are a little choppy, but our heads are above water. And I do recommend that the Borough continue to build its General Fund balances to acceptable levels. Typical standard is 16% at year's end of total General Fund expenditures for the year, which for the Borough is going to be about $650,000. We should be ending the year with $650,000 in our General Fund balance. And that's a goal we should all keep in mind as we make decisions going forward. There's some more details about finance that I'll skip over if you want to read the report. I do want to let you all know that general, moving on to our codification project, general code has, the ball's in their court now. We've gotten the thing off of our desk, Matt's gotten it off his desk, and we've been told their review and delivery of the final draft code is going to take 145 days. So expect that on our agenda for an August business meeting review and possible approval then. If not then, September, we will have a fully rebooted Borough Code. There weren't any watershed changes that we did in this process. There's still going to be work, and amendments need to be done to update standards that are out of date, but at least we'll be working from a text that is accurate and reflects everything that has been passed to Three quick things I want to touch on that are internal, you wouldn't know about if I didn't tell you. Couple of employee benefits that I mentioned last month are off the ground. A deferred compensation retirement plan is offered to employees. It's completely employee-funded, no employer match, and allows employees to defer a portion of their income up to IRS limits and have interest accrued tax-free, and they can take that money back out again when they become age eligible to do so, and there's options to put the money in as taxable income, where there's options to pay the tax on it and withdraw it in the future like you would in a Roth or IRA, not pay taxes on the back end. So a lot of flexibility for the Borough employees to plan their retirements and to supplement the defined benefit pension plan that is currently offered to full-time employees. We've also added a flexible spending account for dependent care expenses, so employees can elect to defer some of their income into a tax-free account that they spend in the calendar year on things like a daycare bill. So it's a way to support our employees who have young children in daycare. And I hope, hopefully, we'll have, we do have employees with young children here. Many of them are work, are supervised by our Chief of Police. Hopefully, they'll be able to take advantage of it, and as well as the administration. We're also, I wanted you to know, and I'll conclude with this remark, that we started a time, we're beginning next Monday, which starts a new pay period, we're starting a time and attendance system through ADP, our payroll provider. Hourly employees will be able to tap in and out on their smartphones, much like a time clock. The and salaried employees will report their hours. It'll all be electronically transmitted to payroll. It'll streamline payroll processing. It'll reduce the amount of time inaccuracies. It's good for the employees. They'll know where they stand on their paid time off balances. They can check, they can access the system. They have employee access anywhere within internet or mobile connection. And it's also going to lighten the burden on the Police Department. There won't be as much, it won't be as difficult to report overtime. Right now, we do it monthly, so this will be handled on a bi-weekly basis. It'll be reported and approved by the Chief of Police, so there'll be a check and balance there. And for the officers, they're going to get their overtime on a bi-weekly basis instead of monthly, so they won't have to wait two weeks for their money. So thank, that's another Matt West project, and I just wanted to recognize all the good work he's done in the first two months of this.
Thank you, Matt.
That's all. If you had us all. Could you update us on 201 Sabine?
Yes, that was on our manager's report. The Borough signed a three-year lease with a three-year option for renewal for the vacant space formerly occupied by Crazy Aaron Enterprises. The new tenant may be familiar to many of you as Latner Capps.
Okay, thank you. Nice to see that we'll be getting some revenue.
Revenue we need, yeah.
Get our balance sheet for 201 Sabine back in order. Wanted to make a point of that.
Not quite our last tenant, but they'll do.
All right. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report?
Just one thing I'd like to note is that over the last month, and harking back to last year, as council may remember, there was a number of complaints last year regarding property maintenance issues dealing with tenants not having proper heat in their apartments or rental areas. Now that we have a proper property maintenance code in place after that was enacted, I believe in December, we have been able to remedy such issues over the last month and give credit to Borough staff and to your keys in catching those and responding to those. But I think it's important for council to know that we are already utilizing that property maintenance code to better serve the public for these complaints. So now we have that tool in place and hopefully continue to resolve these matters quickly to the residents' satisfaction in the future.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the monthly reports have been submitted. Comments for the good of council? I'll take the opportunity to, I guess I should have done the strength president's comments, but discuss boards and commissions and, you know, I was asked to look into who would be reporting to who. And so here is what I've come up with. The Fire Company will continue to report as it has to Public Safety. And I would note that the Chair of Public Safety has a board position on the Board of the Fire Company, which gives access to those meetings. Also, the Civil Service Commission would continue to report to Public Safety. The Finance Committee would have an IDA reporting up, as well as the Pension Fund, Police Pension Trustees. The Infrastructure Committee would have the Shade Tree Commission reporting directly to them. And I'm going to take on some roles. And the reason is, I think that some of them fall into kind of the role of the President and others are boards and commissions where, depending on sort of the topic at hand, it requires a little bit of delegation under our new structure. So the Human Relation Commission will report to me. The Planning Commission will report to me. The Rec Board, myself for now, the Vacancy Board, not that they ever have anything to report, Mr. Whitaker.
Ira.
Thank you for coming to the meeting. And the Zoning Hearing Board. And we'll try it this way for maybe about six months, and we'll see if there, you know, obviously, if we need to make a change, we'll make the change, but I'll delegate that as I see fit. So there's that. Thank you. Now let's talk about priorities and projects. Let's see if this is fully edited or not. All right, well, it's, yeah, yeah, pass that around. So this was what we came up with when we did our list of all the things, and we had to do all this to put all the things.
One page, yeah.
It's one page. We're starting with one page. There are some things down at the very bottom, but I mean, I can share them with you. They didn't print, but I think we have enough big stuff at the top. We're going to stay there. And there may be things that you read this list and take a moment to look at it.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Mayor. Here's a copy for our Borough Manager. Here's a copy for you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Solicitor, here you go. Okay. So the idea was that there were going to be three big buckets, and there were going to be three small buckets. And at any given time, the office would be working on these buckets. The goal is to, given a list that is, you know, 25 or 30 items long, in addition to sort of the daily operations of the Borough, how can we move projects forward without a couple of things happening? One is paralysis, where the office feels like it has so much to do, you're just task-switching all day and you're not moving forward. The other is to have all council members sort of agree and understand what the priority list is, as driven by council through the President, to the office, so that at any given time when something happens in the community, or an idea comes up, or some new concept, that we're keeping some structure in order and that the office doesn't feel like different council members are steering them in different directions at different times. And also to provide a sense of structure to the committee meetings, so that they understand what the office is working on. That's not to say they can't discuss at a meeting something new, but to understand that it's really a discussion of, let's get an idea of what this is, and we're going to put it on the list, and we're going to figure out, as a council, how that fits into the overall task list of the office. Hopefully, we can do this in a communal manner and find a way to fill those three big buckets and those three small buckets. And then work with the office to monitor the progression of those projects, to understand the length of time they will take, and, you know, have something in queue, so that as one thing moves out, another thing moves in. Thoughts on that process, anyone?
Can I bring up an idea, just like thinking out loud?
Sure.
So for me, I would need to read this and think about it before I, I don't have an input substantively, but I've done similar things in my law practice where I had to sit down with, you know, maybe five or 10 people, and we all had to decide what's priority one, and what's two, and what's three. And one time, a judge said, well, look, why don't you all take your list home? And you all come, you all tell me what your ones and twos and threes are. And he came back and said, well, everyone has these as a one, two, and three. And that cut like 60 or 70%, and then we grouped the rest. That's just a food for, we don't obviously have to do that. That's just kind of, that did 70% of the job when I, when I didn't do it, when I was part of someone else doing it.
So maybe a way to sort of, I will take it, but to facilitate us moving a little bit along this evening, Mr. Metcalf could talk about the things that are really currently active, and some of them you can see because there are dates on here. But you could talk about things that are, well, anything that is accomplished that we could cross off and, you know, sort of give us an idea, where do we stand with the lay of the land?
Yeah, it's interesting, because I think that we, last time I touched this was probably in the fall of last year.
Yeah.
And the thing that really stands out to me is the number of Project One priorities that we just didn't get to.
Yeah.
You know, that are really important work that we really just didn't get to. You know, we have the first thing on the list, we had a start date of October 3 for RFP for 201 Sabine Planning Services, and we ran out of time to work more on that, and then we ran out of budget to pay for it coming into '19. So that's sort of, that thing went dormant. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I think that when I first constructed this list with Aaron and we talked about it, then this list started to populate the committee, the information spreadsheets on the committee websites, committee SharePoint sites when we reorganized.
Yes.
Those might be good places to look and see if there are projects that I've, that have come up, because we re-brainstormed those ideas and reinstalled them in those three different locations as well. I think there's, I don't think that anything got dropped off, but there's definitely, there's definitely more stuff if you add up all of those three spreadsheets. Now, that being said, what did we finish? Some of these things are cyclical. We do an operating budget every year, and we're done until September. And then we're going to kick up and kick into high gear by October, November, and then cruise into December, hopefully with most of our decisions made like we did in 2018. A lot of these things are coming to fruition and completion in the comp plan. You should get a draft copy of that within five business days and have 45 days to review that prior to the hearing, which is scheduled for the April business meeting. So that one is getting close to done. I guess I, I don't know, are you asking me to go through all of these things?
Well, I guess, no, not to go through every single thing.
I mean, we finished the property maintenance code, but that was a humongous amount of time that, you know, in between the raindrops of doing the operating budget. So that basically sponged up most of my, personally, my project time.
So maybe what I could ask for, and maybe it would be possible to do this by the end of this week, which is two more business days, is for you to update this list. Share it with all council members. Take a cue from Jim, that everyone reviews it, and when we meet on March 6th, everyone comes in here and knows what they want their priorities to be. And it's okay if it's something that's not on this list. Does that?
Can I, yeah, that's something I wanted to ask about, because I, we talked at one point about a climate action plan that could be developed for, say, the next 10 years to reduce carbon emissions within Borough properties. And that's not on this list, but that's something I'd like to, I'd like us to consider.
Probably just publicly, well, I'll put it on the list, and everyone can judge it accordingly.
And my other question is, is how this list relates to the three big buckets concept? So is the big buckets, is that, like, one of those could be environmental concerns that would cluster together several items? Or how are you thinking?
Anything that is on here labeled large or medium, I would consider large. And then small is small. And one of the things that I anticipate is that small things are going to move more quickly, but really that we help the office focus to realize they're only really working on about three things at a time. And I know that it's a little rigid sounding, but we're trying to sort of corral what for, you know, the past 20 years has just sort of been throw things at the wall and see what sticks, and develop some kind of a process. Michelle has some.
When we throw things at the wall, they should stick when we throw them at the wall. So I just happened to look through the three committee party lists. I only see, the only committee that has anything is infrastructure right now, Public Safety and Finance Administration don't have anything on the project list. Infrastructure has all the projects, there's 22 projects on here. And develop requests for proposals for 201 Sabine Planning Services isn't on there anywhere. We have Sabine Avenue Campus Planning, capital improvements, and Park Planning improvements. And I just think it's, I know we're going to come back to this, but I want to say it here, and I want to say on the record, say in public, I think that when we agreed that that was, when we talked about that being a priority to explore the planning services, I think we need to, we need to make sure that that doesn't just, things like, things that have been labeled as number one priorities on your list can't just drop off somewhere between there and committees without, without discussion.
No, I think it's a continuity of flow here. And I agree, it's missing.
I agree that the council can't just stick things on there, you know, without agreement, but I also think things just can't drop off the list without us having discussed that.
I think one of the things that, and I don't want to speak for you, Sean, that you're trying to do in the office is to understand the resources you have, how much you can actually accomplish week by week, month by month, and set realistic expectations for us and the public about what we can accomplish with the resources that we have, be it staff or consultants that we've hired.
Yeah, and I would add that I'd also like to get, to get clear, concise directions from the whole body of council on how the resources that we're trying to measure and use are to apply. Where do we want them to be applied? What projects do we want them to be applied to? What's a, what's a priority? What can we, and so that everyone knows where things stand.
Let me give you an example, and then I'll key over to Jim.
Sure, take it to you.
Say we say, you know, amendment to the sidewalk maintenance code is a current project, and we want the office to work on that, and, you know, Sean's estimation is that that's, you know, a week of work. And also, we have another small project, I'll just pick one off here, which is used policy for 80 Windsor Avenue, which is also listed as small, and then maybe would take about a month. The idea would be that, let's say you're working on your Windsor Avenue process, and someone trips and falls and calls a council member, and the council member, this, I can call the office and we're going to talk about this, the office can clearly communicate, listen, we're working on this project, it's going to be wrapping up in about two weeks. We can then address this, it's going to take about a week to do, and you can understand that you're going to have a result, you communicate to the community member a result, you know, in the April, you know, let's say from March to April timeframe, and that, and that we are able to achieve that, right? That it becomes realistic when we tell people, oh, this is not going to happen for three months, but then it actually does. And that there is sort of a memory list where we're tracking these things and we understand where they fit in.
But it might be helpful, so I'll take the example. So there's only four small things listed, and everything else is medium. So the plastics ordinance enforcement, I can't think about why that would be a medium, or the Ed Bridgeway.
You might want to look at these, reclassify some of them.
Yeah, or perhaps there are some things, keeping with the Windsor Avenue example, that perhaps committees can do some of that heavy lifting, that, you know, I really think that we could use the expertise of this table and even perhaps in consultation with our boards and commissions to drag something and then ask the office and John to just put the final details on. I mean, a lot of this list, I think, that we could be doing collectively.
I think that, you know, there has definitely been a, well, it used to be, you know, eight years ago, council members would write ordinances, and sort of they would appear on the table with review from the solicitor. And we've tried to move towards more of a staff-based process.
Yeah.
I do think that's something that can become possible, and I would like to see it, because this is a small town, and, you know, we don't need to be really bureaucratic. But I think we need a clear process in place so that people know sort of what that process is, so that you don't write something and sort of expect it to come onto the next month's agenda, you know, or that it has time to go to the office and work its way through, you know, the public processes, the boards and commissions, like, this is the second time we have had something come across the table that probably should have gone to the EAC, and hasn't.
Because we don't have a process.
And we need to develop the process and continue to improve it, so we can take advantage of those resources. Go ahead.
It's a thought of what I see, my vision of this, this isn't my idea, and just, it's a request from you, to you, President Mutryk. I see this as just a trial framework. This is, to me, this list is Sean's way of telling us that we have a resource allocation problem. We have 30 things, we can't do 30 things right now, and we need this governmental body to tell us what we're going to do now, what we're going to do next week, what we're going to do next year. Clearly, Norworth has never done that before. It doesn't mean that it's going to be written in stone, we're not going to get it perfect. But I think this is an opportunity for this group to go through a trial and error process where we add in what things we think are missing, or note that we think things were forgotten, or change a priority that we think is inappropriate. And what I would ask of you, Aaron, and if you don't like it, just, you know, candidly tell me, but for me, I would like it if, when we discuss this next, because it sounds like we're going to, if we spend as much time as possible talking about what we want to allocate resources to. And I think that what we could think about doing to eliminate bureaucratic time is, for example, I'm just going to do this off the top of my head, but if in Aaron language, you sent out an email saying, hey, guys, here's Sean's best list we have as of now. Could you please, by this date, reply to me with your, and you do it how you want, give us some categories, give us some options, but if we all have to supply the same information with the exception of things we think are missing, and then you can see where we're matched and where we're different, then we could focus all our energies on compromising and coming to a consensus to try and tell the office how we want resources allocated. Is that crazy, or?
Well, I think we, I think we have to do it as part of a public meeting, but that doesn't mean you can't come prepared.
Okay, could we just, could we work under a framework? Like, could you give us a document that we're all going to work on, so we're all working with the same information?
I would hope so.
I have a checkup to add.
Yeah.
What is the thing?
I'm just getting run over, sorry. I've tried twice, it's fine, go, go, go.
That was my fault.
It's fine, it's fine.
I didn't know anybody's fault, and then she did.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay, so just two thoughts. One is that there's certain boards and commissions that are generative, and I don't see this as part of this list. So the Environmental Advisory Council, they're already chugging away ideas, and I have no doubt helped bring them to the council at some point, and that would feed, that will add to this list. The Planning Commission may, as they continue to be, add to this list ideas. And another Shade Tree has an agenda, a pretty aggressive agenda about having, improving canopy, tree canopy. Second thought is that about the, just to add to Jim's idea of having us sort of declare what we each think are priorities from a common list. One way that works in organizations where there's groups of people who all have to contribute and in public is to do it the way the Planning Commission tallies or interesting issues. I'm talking about Montgomery County Planning Commission tally interesting issues by having them on a large sheet of paper and using dots. So every council member gets, you know, six orange dots for their first priority, six green dots for their second priority, and we simply do that in public, put our dots on the issues. And then, and then everyone can immediately see without any reporting out or discussion where the priorities are of the current body. And it saves a lot of communication. So I'm just going to suggest that.
Can we do that next?
We could do that next, Mr. Metcalf, get a big piece of paper, I think you have some, and let's give it a go. Everybody's nodding.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest. I caught Gigi off, Aaron, so she was trying to say something, and I totally did that to her by acting.
I understand that, you know, this list, you know, this did come, this was a while ago, right? So when it was compiled, and then obviously, when we have seen it tonight. I also think that, Michelle points out, that infrastructure on their list currently has whatever, 23 or 33, whatever she said, on that list. 22. And, but I also think that because things are changing, some of those items, as Mr. Mutryk said, boards and commissioners reporting to now different, in a different structure system, that some of those items, or some of even these that we're talking about, would actually take on a different life or a different role because you're handling some of them or because, whatever reason. Or because the office says, you know, we just, we ran into a bump, and this is going to be another 100 days or another 40 days. So I think that while I completely understand that we do need a ranking, we do need a common ally of where we're headed, I just caution to say that we were discussing earlier how some of us transitioning to the new format are sort of struggling to find our way as to how we set our agendas and what we're going to do going forward. So this would be helpful, I think really helpful in doing that. And then I also think that the office has to have their dots as well.
Yes.
So that's what I'm saying.
Well, the beauty of a system like this lies in accountability. And in the end, you know, you're accomplishing, and how it differs from what you set out to accomplish. And, you know, I feel like my role is to balance a very dogmatic approach with the realities of being human beings and the realities of people working in groups. But it also, it sets metrics. I mean, if, if the office says that it's going to take, you know, 90 days to do the Phase One concept for Windsor Avenue, and it ends up taking 180 days, that, that is in. is informative for both of us, for, you know, for the office as well as us, as really board members, council members. And then we can go back and review and, you know, figure out where we went wrong, and edit the process.
So I think just picking our top three, our buckets, is, it's not quite that easy. Because what exactly then are we doing? So as a council, as a legislative body, we're choosing three things for the office to work on, and then what? I mean, I was asking, what are we doing in committee meeting while we are waiting for the office to complete these tasks?
Well, I think a lot of the tasks have, will have continual checkpoints and updates, month over month, as they move forward with those tasks.
So we are just receiving information from the staff?
This is just resource allocation.
When I say checkpoints, this is where we're coming along in this process. I have these questions for you at this point in the process. Office has, that committee would discuss. I think that is, that is in many ways the bulk of what a committee meeting would be. The second piece is new things that may come onto the list, discussing them. And we've talked about this, and I know there's been some, people have not been completely comfortable having new things sort of come up out of nowhere in committee meetings, because there's a fear that somehow it's the new thing, it's the, you know, shiny object, and it goes right to the top of the list. I'm hoping a process like this will actually open the door for committees to feel comfortable bringing up new topics, having community members come discuss things, but then understand that's a great idea, and here's where we are in our to-do list, and it's gonna go here. And then we know that it's here, and it's written down, and we don't have to worry about it, and we don't have to wonder why nothing has happened three months later, because you know it's six months now. Does that make sense?
Yeah. No, I just think we need to find that balance, where we still can represent the voices of our community, where we can still contribute, and this is not just a body of us giving tasks to the office, that there have to be generative conversations.
So, so to that point, you know, if a topic were to come to a committee from the public, or from a council member, either out of desire, or out of something happening in the community, and there's an open conversation in that committee to discuss it, and also discussing that, you know what, this is really important, and this needs to happen right now, then that needs to come to the next council meeting as a recommendation from that committee, to say, okay, we have to have a conversation, because there's a cost to reframing the office's tasks, to saying, stop working on what you're working on, and I need you to work on this for 60 days.
Right. Who makes that decision?
And the reality is, the seven of us need to make that decision, versus sort of putting the office in an uncomfortable position of trying to read the politics without actually sort of having a formal vote about what we want to do.
Absolutely. And I did, in full disclosure, I, just because I am visual, I started to sketch something out and send it to you, in that, you know, we could almost do a project management system, like a sketch, you know, here's an idea, where did it come from? Where's the, it goes to Aaron. Then, you know, question one, are there boards and commissions that should be consulted? If yes, go here. If no, go here. I mean...
Well, I'll tell you, if you would like to prepare a standard operating procedure, I know that some council members would love to take a look at it.
Oh, I like, writing rules for a living.
It's not rules. It was a visual flow chart with different colors.
But that's rules. That's rules on paper.
It has to be flexible.
It provides a process.
Cindy's point is well taken about, you know, what's the committee's role in dealing with agenda. Just as I'm preparing to, for the Friday morning meeting of the infrastructure committee, we're kind of looking at the items on our agenda. And basically, there's not really any task for the committee to do this Friday. It's basically getting some updates from the office about, and some information, really reports. You know, 99% of what's happening in the borough is happening because the professional staff are now really well organized, and they're executing. They're making things happen. And then there is that, there are then those edges, though, that I think Cindy's pointing to, where, you know, we're looking to the future, and we want to see things happen. And that's, that's where we're, I think we're gonna have to see on Friday, in the infrastructure meeting, you know, where, where that edge is, and just be conscious of how to make that work.
I'm hoping that...
I think you're pointing it to a way for that to work.
A way for that to be able to happen, and in a way that doesn't ruffle feathers, doesn't make people sort of fear that it's gonna jump to a conclusion, but that there's a process for these things to work through, and comfort for the office. That when something comes up in a committee meeting, what they're not hearing is, my boss wants me to drop everything I'm doing and do this thing right now. Because that doesn't, that just is not effective use of time.
Did you wanna go first?
I, it doesn't matter.
Okay. So, so I appreciate what you're saying about flexibility. And I just wanted to bring up one example. So that the discussion that we had about the bike grant, I think, was a very good example of this kind of back and forth, where we're discussing with our borough manager, should we devote time to this bike grant now and make that a priority, knowing that that comes at the expense of time spent on other projects? So, so I think that's, that's the healthy kind of back and forth that we can do. My other thought related to that is, what about the bigger environmental picture, say, surrounding that bike plan? And so that's where I would wanna have a conversation about a climate action plan, for example. Or similar conversation with the parking lot, 201 Sabine, where you feel like we're looking at one piece of a much bigger puzzle. So part of what I see in this list of priorities is questions that I have about scale and about sequence, you know, so. And, you know, I recognize now, a year into this, that it's impossible to have all the information. You know, there are only so many studies that we can afford to do, right? So, but I, I wonder, as we set these priorities, if there's a way, in conversation with our office staff, if we could get a sense of, you know, in this priority bucket, say, environmental concerns, if Sean were in a position to say, we could do this piece of it this year, that would set us up for a longer-term vision. I mean, from what I've seen, the comprehensive plan process is very valuable and important, but it doesn't give us the kind of granular detail that we would need for, say, a 10, you know, it's not, it's not a 10-year climate action plan, say. So, so that's kind of my thought. I mean, there are things that we could do that might be higher order of magnitude impact than, say, you know, I was very supportive of the bike grant, but we might be able to switch our electric supply for the borough buildings to a wind supplier within a 48-hour period if we prioritize that. You know, I'm not sure how long that would take. But I've done that as a homeowner, you know, in one day. So I would love to see us all bring that kind of sense of priority to get in conversation with the staff. If we have the goal of Sabine developing, what are the highest priority decisions that we need? We discussed the roof, but what's the bigger picture decisions that we need to make this year? And the same with environmental concerns, kind of broadly construed. So...
My hope is by building that box at a committee meeting where you have the opportunity to present new ideas and discuss them, in a, in a format where it's obvious that it is not a request for immediate action. It allows the office to participate more, sort of go out on a more of a speculative limb about what might be possible, and do it with comfort. I mean, ultimately, you know, the public servants that work in the office, they, you know, they have the jobs they do. They chose the career as they did, because they want to help elected officials move policy forward. The elected officials come up with the policy, the public servants move the policy forward. And I think previously, there's sort of been a fear that maybe by showing interest, or expressing, you know, enthusiasm, that council members go away with the idea that, oh, that's gonna get taken care of by the next meeting. But again, it can't, because it can't all happen at once. So maybe, you know, it builds the opportunity for more creativity and collaboration, than an idea that's a little more fleshed out, or to say opportunistic, if we do this little thing, it will poise us to do this bigger thing.
Right.
Can come to a council meeting, be recognized as a little thing that it is, and not be sort of confuse us. Is this the big thing? What are we really asking for here?
Right.
Understand what it is, and then we can put in that bucket, the little things.
Yeah. And there's an opportunity to, to connect these pieces more, so that when we're talking about a bike grant, for example, we could connect it to a larger carbon reduction plan. Or when we're talking about the parking lot, we could connect it to our larger vision. And, you know, it doesn't mean we have to do all this work in the space of a year or two, but to have that broader picture is something I'd love to see.
Okay. So good discussion.
Yeah.
All right. Michelle?
I'm not sure how to say this, or even if I wanna say it.
You're welcome.
My grandma would have said, then don't.
Right, right, right.
Well, I just kind of wanted to, this is something that Cindy said earlier on in the discussion, that sort of dropped down, and we've gotten onto, I think, a very fruitful discussion about how to set policy directions, how to bring, how to generate ideas, how to bring new ideas to, you know, to the table without leapfrogging ahead, or having an expectation of that. But Cindy said something earlier that resonated very deeply with me about the concept of just actually doing work. I'm not frankly a big page person. I don't really, I'm not a visionary. I like, I'm feeling happy that there are people with big visions. I'm not one of them. And I actually didn't run for office to be on a board of directors. If I wanted to be on a board of directors, I would have tried to be appointed to a board of directors of an organization. I ran for like, for a legislative body to be involved in the legislative process, not just to give directions to other people. And so being told that there's never a time, and I, this is what I'm hearing, at this point in time, maybe it could change for council to actually involve themselves in the nuts and bolts of drafting something like a simple policy for park uses, or resolution for waivers of fees for nonprofit revenues, things that aren't like big, big things that involve interacting with our, with our accountants and producing budgets, things that are so clearly administrative. But these are more small legislative tasks. I think it's, I think it's, I think it would be an unfortunate thing for us to decide as a body that, that we just can't, because in the past, it was a problem. The council members wanted to like intrude into the areas that are administrative. Therefore, now councils should just only be at this very high level, like a board of directors, and just kind of direct the office to do things, and maybe move around some priorities. That's, to me, it's not, I think it would be an unfortunate thing. I hope we are not making a decision that does the way we will operate for all times. Perhaps for a limited period of time, as we put in place a more disciplined process. But, but I hope there will be room for council members who are interested, and who take satisfaction and have something to contribute in the way of nuts and bolts work, to allow that to happen. Because I think, as you pointed out, our community is small enough that we don't need to be that bureaucratic.
I, I agree. And I think I would like to see enough process and structure in place so it can happen in an orderly way. And I'll give you an example of where it hasn't, because that might make it more clear. And I'm not, you know, I supported the plastics ordinance. A council member does a lot of work. They meet with community members, they build something, they do research, they put together a really nice ordinance. We all get excited about it. It was, you know, controversial in some ways, but it was exciting in others. I mean, we're the first municipality in the state to pass it. I know that the office felt, I don't wanna say rushed, but that how are we going to enforce this? What is the mechanism? What are the resources that are gonna be required? That sort of backend process sort of took a sideline to, in some ways, getting the ordinance across the table. Now, I think in the end, we worked it all out, but it was messy, and it caused a lot of agita for a lot of people on both sides of the issue. And my hope is, is that when, if a council member were to do that work product, that it can fall into a process where it can be reviewed, so the office can come back and say, you know what, these ideas, they're yours to, yours to make reality, yours to make law, but this is what it's gonna cost, this is what it's gonna take in terms of time on an ongoing basis, and et cetera. I think Jim discussed, you know, making sure we can care for what we have before we add more responsibilities, and there's a review process that would be necessary. And I'm hoping that council could accept that without feeling like the results of that review process were a judgment on the legislation. They're sort of the reality of what happens after we all vote aye.
I'm gonna ask a specific question. Let's, let's assume that what Michelle's proposing is just an inevitability. I've been on the council's seven years. It's inevitable that council members are gonna be generative. And in the future, there will be council members who come to this with the same...
Even though we were told not to be.
There we were. Well, that's, in the future, there will be council members who come to it with the same intentionality that you have, to generate, you know, be part of the work. And there's certainly, that's the kind of community we are. So, so to put you on the spot, Aaron, and perhaps the borough manager as well, how do you visualize that feeding in, given the structure we're talking about now? How does it, how would it practically feed? So let's say, you know, take an example.
Can we say stormwater, please? Because I've been waiting five years to have a discussion about stormwater.
Stormwater. Stormwater. Like, so here's...
That's a good one. Dot it in. Square peg, round hole, it's in.
That's a good one. It's a good one. So the Lower Man Conservancy would love to help the borough of Norbert with stormwater management. They may be plugged in in some ways already, to the borough man with the election managers. I'm sure, I'm sure they probably are. I know there's some federal guidelines, and I know also that there's a lot that residents can do by discharging, recharging stormwater that comes off the roads, like into their own yards. It's gonna like reduce a lot of the downstream runoff into the Indian Creek, right? How, so let's say some council members wanna organize neighbors in like an educational thing. How does that, you know, as initiative of council, initiative of the infrastructure committee, how does that work? And we start writing, and we start producing, you know, having meetings and getting neighbors to, you know, how does this work?
Make up an answer.
Yeah, well, I'm putting you on the spot intentionally.
But it's fine. This is a working session.
This is an exercise, yeah.
I would imagine that the council member is gonna take the initiative. They're gonna bring people together, they're gonna start putting ideas down, they're gonna have some overarching idea of what the goal of the legislation is. They're going to have access to staff in a preliminary way to say, look, this is something I'm working on, and I need you to think about, you know, you know, is this a gigantic lift on the inside? Is it a minor lift on the inside? But it's not gonna be a detailed analysis. And talking about building that trust, so that they feel like they can sort of offer that off-the-cuff analysis of, this legislation you're proposing doesn't really seem like it's gonna really impact our daily operations in the office, or you're talking about hiring three staff members to make this happen. I would imagine at some point, it would continue to develop, based on that, those answers, into more of a, you know, almost ready legislative form, because we are all pretty good writers, and can get something, especially with the solicitor's help, who has a little more bandwidth than the office in many respects, to a final form. At some point during that process, it's gonna come to all of council that this is something that's being worked on and being proposed for adoption. And council can understand, okay, we're gonna need to send it to the office for an evaluation. And we talked about, that's a small project for, for almost everything, which is the office that just come back with a formal report, we talked about it last month, of this is what, this is what it's gonna take on the inside. And then we can determine as a council, based on the result of that, where it falls in the priority list. Now, that, it's the kind of thing, we're gonna work together. I mean, a council member can make a motion, and if someone seconds it, it's on the table. But the reality is, to understand, you know what, this, make this good legislation. Because, you know, I mean, and some of us have read state bills where it's like, who wrote this thing? Right? And we don't wanna do that. To make this good legislation, it's gonna take another three or four months, sort of from the best place a council member can put it, so it can go through the solicitor, it can get more review, it can go through all of council, et cetera, and move along. That's a long-winded answer I just made up, but I don't know if that's helpful. Or at least promote some discussion. Go ahead, Cindy.
Two comments. So I actually think your answer contradicts where we started, which was really pick three tasks for the office to work on. Don't ever ask the staff questions, because then they feel like it's a directive, not to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Which is not what your answer was, saying that you would go to council, or you would go to staff and say, hey, can you, you know, answer some questions?
Well, there's a difference between a 20-minute phone call and asking them to go do work product that's gonna take them out.
Okay. So we, so clarify a question. Back to what you were saying, Rob, I do think it would be helpful, and perhaps a little more balanced than the pendulum swinging to council choose three priorities for the staff to do, get reports at committee meetings until that's over, and move on to next three. If we go with, Rob, what I think I heard you saying was, kind of, instead of tasks, what are our three themes? You know, so if we had a climate change bucket, if we had a smart streets bucket, if we had a, I don't know, city bank bucket, and then were to organize the tasks under that, you know, and prioritize those tasks that way, that would tee up some, some space for council to be working on your stormwater under climate change.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I get the idea, and I get that we all have really great ideas, but there's some municipal services, unfortunately, this Jim's word, and I'm taking it for now, that have to be addressed. And so we have to put those as priorities first. I love the climate change idea, but I don't think, and I agree with the 10-year plan, I agree with that. But what I'm saying is, the pieces that we're doing about stormwater, great, we can get our neighbors to discharge, but the office actually...
our neighbors to discharge, but the office actually has to do the work of going and either putting those screens and caps in our, our stormwater catches, or not. We have to come up with the dollars to do that, we have to come up with the ideas, who's gonna do it, when's the best implementation? There are other parts to it. So although it addresses some, right, environmental issues, it addresses some of those, the reality is, it's still gonna take Sean and whoever else is involved, Ed and everyone else, to figure out how we actually do it on a municipal level. Yes, we can engage our neighbors, but there is a portion of this that absolutely has to come from them, that takes up their time and hours. And I think, and again, I'll go with, with parking study. I love all the ideas that you're putting forward, and we have a parking study, and...
Well, it's been...
You know, I, what I'm saying, it might be, but I'm saying, where does it fit, right? What I'm saying, we're breaking it, I think we're getting caught in this idea of, we're getting caught in the idea of that all our ideas have to drive the agenda, and what I think Erin's trying to say is, some of them can, but a lot of them might not. And that, as much as we wanna prioritize everything, and we do, because we live here, and we have to look our neighbors in the face, but we also have to take care of those very basic things, like repaving the roads is gonna come up, that's not on here, all of those things. And I think, I think the first statement stands, go back and look at the list, see what's missing, and I think we'll get to the next part of this at the next part. I think, so, I think it would help if we had a digestive moment, and come back at the next meeting, and say, we listened to what we all discussed, and figure out what the best plan is, or come with your other ideas. I don't think it has to be solved in this moment, but I do think we have to get a comprehensive list that addresses some of the pieces that are missing.
Can I just add on that real quick, this is short, because I, but I think that what this is, it's just, it's just our first step at a way to say, right now, like, I go to work every day, and I have 80 open cases, but I get directed from, like, I know that there's like, 10 things that I need to get done this month. The office has a list that's huge, and very little direction on what they should do today and tomorrow. And really, just having a list and prioritizing it, just as a start, just as an exercise, it's actually a major shift in the culture of how this government functions, and I just, if it was, it, it, to me, if it was just my decision, I would say, why don't we just try to come up with a list, and see where it's not gonna, we're not saying we're adopting it.
We're not gonna die by it, right.
We're not gonna be able to come, it's, it's gonna be missing things, this is a, this is a democratic thing, so everyone's gonna walk away upset about something, but we have to try to come up, we should try to come up with some means to prioritize and allocate resources, because what the staff is telling us is, we don't, we can't do everything that this group wants now, we don't have direction from you under what our priorities are, and you keep coming up with new stuff, all of which we're okay with, but you're not giving us any direction or preference list on what we should work on first. We just, we have to come up with a way to prioritize.
So just to clarify, I'm not suggesting anyone's voice or agenda, rather that there be a balance between who is, who is creating the list.
Right.
So I would like to say, we should be able to add to this list, and then, as a, as a staff and a legislative body, talk about how we prioritize.
Yeah.
It's not that I'm saying who should get the agenda, it's not that I'm saying it...
I think this is gonna come up for review all the time.
Probably like, every month, yeah. It's gonna be a living, breathing thing, we're gonna mess with all the time.
And I think, and these themes that you mentioned, I mean, those are themes you can use in your committee, those are, those are policy themes, like, what am I gonna spend my time working on, creating legislation that falls under a certain umbrella?
Right, outside of municipal functions. Like, of course, I'm not saying, let's forget about trash and parks, so we can do climate change. Obviously, we're doing municipal functions, but we can be better than that, and we should.
I, I, there's two lists I'd like to see not buried in SharePoint. This is one of them, and I think it should be buried in SharePoint, I think it should be someplace more visible.
We can make sure it's put it every month.
And actually, this is kind of lives as in a graphic kind of formality list. And the, and the other one is, actually, the everything that's going on, that it's unseen, every day, day in and day out.
That's a great idea.
Actually, just have that list, and from us, and it's on the other side, everything Gigi's got, all the core municipal services, because that's most of what's going on here, all day long, every day.
And we don't hear it, right, right.
And actually, you know, I really appreciate Chief Gallagher providing us this, this incident report every month, because it's very, kind of, it's both informative, but it's also reassuring, you know, that these, that these items are being touched upon. And, and so I'd like to see, I'd like to see those two graphics, yeah.
I think this is...
With respect to the second one, I will point out that it's part of an officer's job to log all these calls, and it reminds me of when I used to practice law, and have to, you know, keep track of my hours, and it's a huge administrative burden to produce a list of what you do all day, to prove that you're...
To get paid.
In and of itself, because a big time sucks, so I, I wouldn't want to...
I don't want to do too much of that.
No, no, no.
It's a different, it's a different task, but I, but I do think it's almost like there's, you know, there's, there's, there's a clock, you know, the, I notice the street sweeper goes by, and it's really kind of great, this is, this is really important. If the government were closed for a month, we would notice our street sweeper, it would be really messy.
35. But to your point, just like I noticed that 15, you know, it was, oh, let me ask about this, and Chief Gallagher then explained, there was a policy shift, there was an education, I mean, data can help inform all of us, and I think not understanding what some of those core municipality functions are, I think that's a really...
Boy, you know what, you hit the nail on the head. We all need to know, we need a list of these things.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that's something that I think I'm gonna ask the office to prepare, and I don't know if it can happen in the next two weeks, but, you know, sometimes these things come very quickly, and sometimes they're a little harder to just put down, but I think it would be helpful for us and the public to have really, I call it an exhaustive listing of daily ops, right? What's happening on a daily basis.
I'll like to take a monthly op.
It's not something you have to prepare every month, I think it's something you just have to prepare.
Monthly.
Give us a monthly op, would be helpful.
We want bathroom breaks, lunches.
Reference.
Floor breaks, chugging and angry.
When we are inventing all these new things for staff to do, to look at this list of all the things that you already do all of the time, and I think it would be, help us keep us in reality a little bit.
Yeah, perfect.
Precisely.
Yep.
Precisely.
Yeah.
We're really gonna go home before we recall.
All right, so, this conversation is concluded for this evening, it was an excellent conversation, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. Nine, new business, is just a point of information, adjournment hearings work will be meeting on March 5th, to consider the special exceptions requested for 114 Forest Avenue.
There you go.
Is there any old business?
I think so.
Any, nope, that I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Before we adjourn, do something...